I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Gallivan?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Okay, our first agenda item is on number four, the Business Partnership to Work-Based Learning Network Event.
Good evening, we're excited to share an upcoming event that we're going to be hosting in partnership with the new Addison Business Exchange. So they're a new group that is the new chamber organization in town, but they're calling themselves the Addison Business Exchange. And they have just a lot of passion, a lot of energy, and they were kind of aligned with what we are looking to do. So we're partnering with them to meet our goal as, as the community hopefully has heard. One of our huge initiatives is making sure that our students are college and career ready. So we've been doing a big push to make sure that we have pathways in getting our students connected and kind of bridging that gap between getting students the experience they need and the hands-on training and the work-based learning. So we're going to be doing this event coming up on August 19th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in the district office. So we'd like to invite all of our local businesses to come and hear about the different pathways that we offer. We have 18 different pathways, we're going to talk about those. We're also going to talk about the variety of ways that the businesses can partner with us. So that's anything from doing internships, apprenticeships, job shadowing, field trips, mentoring our students. All of those opportunities we're going to be discussing. And there's quite a variety of ways that, an variety of levels that businesses can get involved. We also are able to do in-person, we're able to do hybrid, virtual, whatever works best for the business. So we, we encourage everyone to come on out and hear about these opportunities. It's a win-win, benefits the students, benefits the business, free event, so please come on out, sign up. The registration link is up on our website. So we encourage you to go to dopage88.net and you'll find the link right there. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, Dani Brink, and I'd be happy to get you signed up. Again, the event is coming up, so we're hoping to get RSVPs as soon as possible. So please feel free to fill out that link as soon as you can. So thank you to, to our board for supporting this initiative, thank you to our administration for all their work, and of course to our local businesses and community for really helping with this effort to, again, win-win, help the schools as well as the businesses. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, our next item is petitions and hearings, breakfast of the Board of Education to provide a place on our agenda for unwelcome comments and suggestions from the public. Do we have any cards this evening?
Oh, we have one card this evening, Superintendent Amy Zare.
So if you'd like to come up here to the front. Just push the button, yeah, he already turned it on for you. We have magic mics here.
Good evening, District 88 Board of Education members. I'm here on behalf of myself, the administration, the Board of Education, District 48, Salt Creek. And just to say thank you so much for the kindness, the generosity of your entire team for, we were homeless over the last couple of months of school because of heavy construction at our schools. And I just wanted to say to the board and to the administration, thank you so much for allowing us to use your space at Willowbrook. There's no better sense of community than allowing us to live with your partners at Willowbrook. And you guys have rolled out the red carpet for us. So from Dr. Barbadente to Mr. Damorecki, Dr. Kraus, the entire team, your Buildings and Grounds crew, your technology crew has been outstanding and they really paved the path for us to, in a very stressful time, get our work done and be part of the schools, plan for the school year yet to come, which is, school is starting on time. So first question I get for every, from everyone is, school starting? Yes, school is going to be starting on time, in person, on the 27th for kids. And we are very much looking forward to it, but I graciously thank you on behalf of our board and our administration for allowing us to use your space. So thank you so much.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you. Wish you the best of luck, it's starting on time.
Thank you. And good luck to your new school year, too. Thank you. Thank you. Any other cards, Dani?
We do not have any other comments this evening.
Okay, great, thank you. Next we have item six was the motion to establish a consent agenda. The items on the consent agenda were items that were previously discussed, or routine matters. Did I entertain a motion?
We do have a revised personnel report as part of the consent agenda, so some last-minute hires that are on for the board's approval today. It's at your station as well as also in the board book.
I move to establish a consent agenda.
Okay, any questions, comments, seeing none, roll call, please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gallivan?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Motion's approved, next I entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Sergeant.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gallivan?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes, motion's approved. Next we have our item eight, the separate action items, we have the treasurer's report for June 2025.
Presenting to the board this evening for month ending June 30th, 2025, a total balance of $82,946,410.72. Interest rates hovered right around 4.5% this month, staying relatively flat from the month prior. This month's interest income was $225,199.18, bringing our year-to-date and fiscal year interest income to $3,533,842.53.
Intertain motion?
I move that the Board of, Board of Education approve the treasurer's report as presented.
Roll call, please.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gallivan?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes, motion's approved. Next we have the annual financial report.
Try, you okay if I take over and show a code? All right, so we have wrapped up the fiscal year, FY '25. And on a operating budget, so again, this is not including the capital projects fund or debt service fund. We had a projected deficit of $3.5 million heading into the year. We did have a transfer from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund to help cover the summer 2025 projects, so the summer projects that we're wrapping up right now of $2.3 million, bringing a net deficit planned of $5,877,632. When we closed throughout the year, we had several positive things that happened to us. A lot of good revenue came in, mostly related to early property taxes and then interest income, as you just heard. We had a gross change of about $4.8 million, basically bringing a deficit overall, cutting it from $5.8 million to $1,023,729 to reserves. So after all the projects and spend, we only had a deficit of a little over a million dollars. Bringing our fund balance, not of early June property taxes, to $29,423,672. So how we got here? We received more revenue than we had budgeted for. Again, those are those early taxes as well as the interest income, as well as a little bit of federal money from ESSER that carried over into this fiscal year. We also spent less than we planned for, about $582,000 less than we spent. That's how you get that gross change of $4.8 million. Our operating funds revenue, we had received $90,000, or $90,123,498. And our operating funds expense, $88,786,585, bringing a operating surplus of $1,336,912. Had we not transferred any money out of the working cash fund into the capital projects to do projects, we would have added $1.3 million to the operating fund balance. So our deficit is truly related to the projects that we authorized for this summer. Make sure I went the right way, yep. So digging a little bit deeper into the operating funds revenue side, we had 105% of budget, so we got about 5% more revenue than we thought. Property tax collections were significantly more than budget by about $2.5 million, almost 2.6. We, our early property tax receipts collected were at about 52.45%, which is up higher than the expected five-year trend of 51.14% and historical 49.6% trend. So as you can see, we are still hovering in that high early property tax rate. And I'm going to jump ahead really quick to show a quick graph, which makes sense to kind of show. So you can see kind of the history over the last 12 years of the early, June, early tax collection rates. We were dipping down right into COVID, kind of going from a peak back in 2017 at 51.3. There was never a time prior where we were into the 52s, except for the last four years. So we've had four strong years of having 52-plus percent property tax collected. And as such, not quite the highest, but the third highest over the last 12 years. Go back a little bit. Again, if we take the money in early, like we did in June, we just have to reduce our next year's fiscal budget in terms of revenue, because that money's already been received, and that's cash in the bank. So as such, when we bring the budget next month in September, all of this is taken into consideration for those revenues. State aid, we were down about $333,000. A lot of this had to do with the proration of the categorical grants, from 69% to 79%. 69% was for special education transportation, and that's the lowest it's been in 14 years. Regular transportation was prorated at 79%, and then the private tuition was at 77%. So basically saying, you know, for special education transportation, you're getting back 69 cents on the dollar you spent. Some years it's been 100. And then corporate personal property replacement tax, or CPPRT, fell short of IDOR's budget estimate, or the Illinois Department of Revenues. They had budgeted a certain number for us in August, and we fell short by about $38,000 and only collected 98.4% of the budget. As we talked about all throughout the year, investment income was strong, you know, interest rates at 4.5 and higher throughout the year, yielded $3,533,843 of total interest income, which definitely helps cover and pay for some of the projects that we did. Federal aid, more than budget by $624,000. I don't think I'll be able to say this again this time next year, but we will take it this year. And a lot of this had to come, had to do from a carryover claim from the ESSER grant, to almost the tune of $700,000. And then lastly, net of investments and CPPRT, other local revenue, up about $125,000 from budget. And this is collected from athletic gates, facility rentals, food sales, and bookstore receipts. So, you know, PE uniforms, locks, combos, and all of that. Jumping to the other side of the ledger, talking through some operating expenditures, salaries were under budget by about $406,000, or roughly 0.7% of a $54.2 million budget. Benefits slightly over by about $33,000, or 0.3% of a $11.2 million budget. The next bullet is kind of my favorite, it talks a little bit about the contractual services coming in under budget by almost $180,000, but then every bullet I listed was every program or area that went over budget. So the athletics, our inter, inter-scholaristic programs, over budget by about $95,000, or 23.2%. O&amp;M, over budget by $182,000, or roughly 22.7%. And then the transportation services, over budget by about $222,000, or roughly 3.7%. We did have some areas here, obviously where we saved, and those were kind of the areas of technology and their software. Our food service vendor, while our sales were up, our estimate of how much they were going to be charging us fell a little bit in terms of about $50,000. And then our SRO payments and auxiliary services that we have for extra duty and time was not up to, up to our full budget amount, so we didn't get, use all of the allocated resources there. And then lastly, miscellaneous things such as like postage and travel, all came in, you know, under budget to help make up and round us off. Supplies were under budget by about $43,000, or 6.3% of the 6.5 million budget. Utilities paved that way, combined, you know, heating and electric, $106,000. We did get competitive bidding items, so we used the cooperatives, we bid out for services, we do get good pricing. And then I'll plug in here that we did convert the district office to LED lighting to help some of those savings out as well. Capital outlay, under budget by about $410,000, or 6.3% on a 6.5 million budget. Again, a lot of competitive pricing and cooperative purchasing. Final payoffs or payouts reflecting unspent change order contingencies that are built into contracts, as well as the liquidated damages that we saw with the culinary arts. And then less contingency needed for emergency repairs and some unspent funds from the plan. And then tuition for outside placements, for special ed or alternative ed vocational, over budget by about $284,000, or just under 6% of budget, or 6% more than budget of the $4.8 million. Again, tuition for special ed is a little tough to judge at the time of budget, it's pretty fluid, it changes throughout the year. We did have, in the middle of the year, some things that changed where we needed to buy additional seats over at a buns bin. It's fluid, so a lot of this is, you try to get as much as you can at the time of setting the budget, knowing that kids can change and go out anytime throughout the year. And one kid can swing a budget pretty severely. This is extremely tough to read, but this is another way to see it, let me see if I can zoom in. I can't on this, but I will try on this. These two charts show in a different manner how I fund the revenue sources. So for the education fund, O&amp;M, actual spent to budget and kind of where the money is, whether it's property taxes, others, you know, which is mostly your interest income is tucked into here, state, federal, and then down here there'd be the totals. So we have that for revenues as well as expenses. So expenses is a little different, there's not revenue sources, but they're more so the objects that are how we coded in school finance. So you have your 100s, 200s, 300s, or salaries, benefits, contractual purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, and tuition. These show your budget to actual and see kind of where things are higher than anticipated. So like your transportation, there's your $222,000, we had a $5.9 million, almost $6 million budget, and you still can't see it, and I'm looking at my screen and none on the top one. So you have a way to read it, here's your budget line, here's your actual line. So for transportation, we had $5.96 million budgeted, we spent 6.18 to get a overspend of $222,000, or roughly 3.72%. Just another way, in case you read things a little differently than hearing a bunch of numbers getting thrown at you. And I'm like, well now I gotta zoom back out. Lastly, this is the, kind of the, the fund balance overall growth. So as you can see that even though we spent and did all those projects, we did about $5 million in summer projects last summer, including the culinary yards, the two-turf fields, the lockers, the roofs. We only spent a little over, about $2.5 million of fund balance. So in doing all of that work, we only took a hit of $2.5 million in total fund balance. Any questions? Overall, we did a lot better than we planned. A lot of it went into early property taxes and investment income. Moving forward as we kind of head into next fiscal year, and we're starting to take a look at other projects we're looking to do, I think primary focus is going to be those that were found in the life safety area for the 10-year health life safety audit that the auditor, or the architects put together for us, to kind of focus on things that we need to do and not necessarily want to do at this point. Yeah?
I didn't realize there was still like, ESSER money hanging out there. Is that the, now that's the end of it?
No more, yeah, it came in right at the tail, or beginning of July, and so it got booked into this, I guess now it's the previous fiscal year.
Is that what the federal government mentioned, that there were funds allocated that were held back and frozen, or is this something else?
No, that was, that was something else. So this was part of the COVID money that was released to schools. The, I should say, the recent release of funds were the funds that were approved and authorized by Congress to release that were supposed to be released July 1 and were held, just recently released. And that was some title funding, like 1, 2, 3, and 4, so like migrant services, English learners, those types of services. So a little different.
But some of that we received.
Yes.
Okay.
No, quick question. On the EBF, and I understand that Chicago's now Tier 1, so we were Tier 2, but there's kind of same with Chicago being Tier 1, no one else is going to probably...
According to the report we just got, we are still in Tier 2. We got about $110,000 of additional tier money last year. Looking at the calculation report they just, or sent out last week, it looks like we're going to get about $90,000 to $97,000, I forgot the actual number, of new tier money. So we still stuck with Tier 2, assuming they don't recalculate everything, which is good for us, because we will still get some additional new money. We'll get everything we got last year, because there's a hold harmless, but the new money is really with the Tier 1 schools. The way the formula works out, it's the most in-need schools or identified as in-need schools. That's where the bulk of the extra money comes from that the governor authorized.
Ryan, can you clarify too, that they did release the carryover money from last year, but the new allocations within Title 2, 3, and 4 have still not been released?
Yeah, we have not seen anything come in yet. So they were supposed to start releasing funding two weeks ago now, and we have not seen anything in yet. So I know Ms. Gallis and I are closely monitoring this as we are heading into heavy budget season, trying to, trying to make plans and then contingency plans for what to do if that funding never makes it to us this year.
Just to clarify too, that Title 2 is what we use for all of our professional development. And so that's the area that we're most concerned about, that's of those three allocations. Title 2 is for professional development and teacher quality. Title 3 is ESL, you know, bilingual funding, although it's always been a very small allocation. So it's, it's, we've always funded well over 99% of that program ourselves. And, and Title 4 is school safety, so we've used some of that money for professional development as well, as well as some of the mental health, you know, supports and whatnot, but that too has been a smaller allocation. So the one that's going to hurt, you know, the, the most is going to be the Title 2 money that would be missing. So we'll see where we end up with, in the end, what they release. Also, can you clarify the fund balance, the percentage of fund balance that's, that is, that we have?
Yeah, we are right around, I believe it's 33, 33%.
Okay.
So still above our fund balance policy of 30 at this point in time.
I move that the Board of Education approve the budget status report as of June 30th, 2025, as presented.
Any questions or comments, seeing none, roll call, please.
Gallivan?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Quayre?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes, motion's approved. Next we have item 8C, the purchase of an activity bus.
There was a revised version, you should all have it, the price changed, I had a typo in the previous one. We are recommending that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a 2020 Chevy multi-function school activity bus in the amount of $55,500 for Addison Trail High School. This bus has been inspected by Addison Trail's Autos Teacher and the recommendation is to purchase. As we begin to replenish our fleet, it is recommended that we replace, that we replace the bus at Addison High School, Addison Trail High School, as the current activity bus is near the end of its life and has needed many repairs. As this is a previously owned vehicle being purchased from Cottage Hill Operating Company, this purchase does not need to go through a formal public bid.
I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of a 2020 Chevy multi-function school activity school activity bus for Addison Trail in the amount of $55,500.
Okay, any questions or comments? Same then, roll call.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gallivan?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes, motion's approved. Next, we have item 8D, the purchase of a ground master.
We are recommending that the Board of Education accept the proposal from Reindeers to purchase a ground master 4010D for Willowbrook High School. The cost for the unit is $117,015.12 plus an additional $15,434.76 for the 60-inch two-stage snow blower attachment. Our current model is from 2008 and is now needing repairs more frequently. Those repairs are increasing in price as the parts are more difficult to source. Rangers provided us pricing based on the awarded contract through Omnia Partners. Omnia Partners is a purchasing cooperative that enables public entities, including school districts, to purchase from vendors holding competitively solicited contracts. Pricing is public information listed under omniapartners.com. All Omnia contracted devices can be, can't be sold over the contracted price.
I move that the Board of Education accept the proposal from Reinders for a total cost of $132,449.88 for one Toro ground master 4010D and 60-inch two-stage snow blower attachment.
Okay, any questions or comments?
I have a question. So is that brand new then?
Yes.
When we buy these, we buy them brand new?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Same then, roll call please.
Poyer?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Gallivan?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes, motion's approved.
Next, move on to discussion items. Item A is the review of board policies, first reading as reviewed by the Board Policy Committee.
So tonight, we have for first read, the policies that were reviewed by the Policy Committee over the summer, and we have these here for the Board's first review, and we will be requesting approval at the next board meeting. There were really no significant changes in these policies, the vast majority were just five-year review. And so again, no significant change or change in practice.
Next, we have item B, District Leadership Team, Joint Leadership Team, and Institute Day Highlights.
Okay. Okay, Charlie, can I have this screen? Or do you want to, yeah, or Danny, you wanna do yours? Okay.
Okay, well, today was our official launch. The train has left the station, we said today, and we are headed boldly into the 25-26 school year. So as we do in most years, we start off the year with quite a bit of training, meetings in terms of preparation. This year, we had an unusual change, you know, in the calendar that we, we've scheduled 2 institute days to get the year started. So we had our first institute day today, we will have the second one tomorrow, giving us a little more time to get in front of certain initiatives and give teachers more time to prep, to prepare before students arrive on Thursday. But typically, we start the year with our leadership workshops that, at the beginning of August this year, we had to begin in July because our school year started a little bit earlier. And so we focused on priorities for the year, which are tied directly to our strategic plan. But also, we, this year, we had Kevin Jones from the International Institute of Restorative Practice spend time with the Joint Leadership Team, which includes administration and our department heads, on restorative leadership practices. So how to create environments that have both high accountability and high support, and really focused on vulnerability, engagement, and mutual accountability across, across our, our team. And so was well received, will be continuing to engage with that work throughout the course of the year, using Linda Klingman's book on heartstrong workplaces, and so doing more work with that with the leadership team throughout the year. We welcomed our new teachers on August 7, and in District 88 tradition, we, we invited many of our community leaders and community partners to be present with us, along with our local legislators. We had a great response there, we had 65 people that we, that we hosted on last Thursday morning. And so we really appreciate the community's support to be here, to welcome our teachers, to show them that it does take a, you know, a village, and so we, we can't do what we do without the support of our community partners. So thank you to the board members too that were here present, and our Board President, Donna Craft Kane, was able to address the group, as well as myself, to share some of the highlights of District 88, some of the work that we're focusing on. So we shared our priority areas and areas of focus for the year, and also many of our district successes. So we had a lot of different successes over, that, that we were able to, that we received news of even just this summer, we had some, some new, some news to, to share. But in terms of, of just topics that we, that we went over, talked a little bit about our long-term facility planning, that's, that we're engaging in, new systems for our MTSS, our multi-tiered system of support initiative, so really looking to make sure that we have comprehensive supports for students, both academically and on the behavior side, shared our professional development opportunities for staff, that, this is again with our, with our new teachers, as well as our expansions in our college and career pathways. So we are, we have 18 different career pathways now, we've continued to expand that work each year and go deeper. And so this year, again, we focused on expanding our dual credit and college credit coursework, and really proud of, of just the work that our, our teachers have done to expand their credentials to teach dual credit and college credit. We have 68 teachers that have earned credentials to teach dual credit. That is a process that's not easy to embark upon, it takes, you know, approvals from the colleges. And so again, we were really pleased with that. And we shared with our new teachers updates on terms of technology, human resources, et cetera. So lots of different legal updates that have to be given now, you know, working in public schools has a lot of weight of responsibility, and so just also focusing on making sure teachers are, understand, you know, how to also make sure that they have the right protections in place and boundaries with students and all of that. In terms of our institute days, we shared quite a bit today from our successes. So a few, few successes that I'd like to share even tonight, that we received word of over the summer. We, as the, the Board, over the last 2 years, we've been working to implement the strategic plan that the Board had set forth back in 2023, and, which has 9, 9 goals, 9-goal areas. And the first ones dealing with certain student achievement in reading and math, as well as college and, and career credentials, as well as graduation rate. And so this summer, we saw some, some, we received some good news in several different areas related to our student performance, both in, in reading and math, but our AP scores, as well as our career credentials and college credits. So we received word that we had a pretty significant increase in our, our pass rate for our advanced placement tests that our students took. And so we have a high percentage of students that access advanced placement courses, and sometimes when you have that happen, you will see maybe a drop in the pass rate because we have students that may be accessing those courses for the first time and stretching themselves a bit. But we had, we saw a big increase on the Addison Trail side, pushing their pass rate over 60% to 62%. And Willowbrook's went up to 80%, so those were really nice increases. And that puts both of our schools over the state average for pass rate in terms of advanced placement. So we're right where we should be, and we continue to have more and more students access those courses. So those were, that was a good news piece that we received. And again, more and more students accessing, I think there's over 1,000 students that took tests, or 1,000 tests taken over at Addison Trail and somewhere in the 900s at Willowbrook. And so again, just a large number of students accessing courses. We also saw some good news based on our students stretching themselves into college and, and dual credit and AP classes. We had over 5,800 college credits earned last year. So coming from off of 3,700 the prior year, so that was a big jump last year. And just looking at tuition savings for our families, that if we just use a College of DuPage tuition rate, that's about $2.6 million in savings for our families last year. So again, those big increases there. Career credentials, we were at about 1,100 last year, or the year prior, rather, and we jumped up to about 1,700, almost 1,700 career credentials earned, industry credentials within our CTE pathways, career pathways. So that was all really good, really good news. And another piece that came about this summer, we, those that are in the, the realtor world are looking at, you know, buying homes and on the realtor sites, may be familiar with what's called the Great Schools ranking. This is the ratings that you see when you go to search a house and what comes up in terms of how schools are rated. And it's a complicated metric, it pulls from multiple different years when you look at the data points. And so it's one that is not, you know, always, I would say, reflecting the most consistent metrics in that it's not pulling from always the same year. However, we have seen a, a change in the way that they are calculating the metric, putting a much higher value on access to rigor and access to college-level coursework. And we believe that based on the efforts that have been made towards, you know, dual credit, college credit, and AP classes, and allowing our students to, more of our students to access those rigorous classes, we saw a significant increase in the ratings on both schools for, on the Great Schools rating. So Willowbrook High School is at a 9 out of 10, outperforming 86% of similar schools, and Addison Trail is at an 8 out of 10, outperforming 77% of similar schools, including our schools in, right here in our area. So we were very pleased to see this, and we finally, you know, we feel that it does reflect the tremendous work that happens each and every day that our staff is, is doing with our students and really stretching students and accelerating them, coming, you know, from wherever it is they come in, whatever skills they come in with into, you know, into District 88. Our staff is really, is able to stretch students and accelerate their learning, and we would just appreciate the resources that the Board has, has allocated, not only to offer a very comprehensive curriculum with a lot of rigor, but also the support structures that are necessary to help students be successful in those rigorous classes. So we really appreciate that support. So this was definitely a good news piece that we, we shared today as well. Also, in our, our English language programs, so our, our English learners, we also saw really good outcomes. Students that are in our bilingual programming, for example, we have overall, in our EL programming overall, 87% of our students in our EL programming are, have met or exceeded expected growth in English language proficiency. We saw in students in our sheltered, our sheltered English program, students that are maybe not accessing native language instruction, but accessing sheltered instruction, we saw 93% of those students meeting or exceeding, and 81% of the students in our bilingual programming meeting or exceeding expected growth. So this was really good progress. It's, it's a testament to not only our, our EL teachers, but also our EL, our bilingual teachers, all of our content teachers who teach sheltered classes, but really, all of our staff in District 88 is interacting and, and has, you know, they are, they have EL students in their classes. We, over the last year, made a move to really disband our ESL 3, kind of segregated courses, and push those students into the general ed curriculum. We, we saw indication that they could be successful there. And our staff has made a lot of effort to, to earn the EL endorsements. And so we have 151 staff members that have added credentials to their license. The majority are EL credentials, some are LBS 1. But we're very proud of that effort, and so that, that allows us to offer our EL students more rigorous classes. We're able to then, to be able to put, to allow them to be into the, the gen ed curriculum, and our teachers have the, the license and the skill to be able to, to instruct them there. So we're seeing again, really good results there with our EL population, and we're really proud of our staff that have really taken advantage of the Board's incentives to diversify their credentials, and so we're, we're very, very excited about the progress there as well. So a lot of good, good news pieces today that we were able to share. We also shared a lot of the marketing materials that have been created, we're really working on ensuring that we're able to, to tell our story out of the community, and highlighting all the incredible things happening within our schools and in our programs and with our students and staff. So again, we, just really exciting opening few weeks here, lots of great events, and here's just a couple pictures of, of some of the, the opening events here, it's the institute day today. We also had our Board President, President Donna Craft Kane, came to address the staff this morning, so thank you. And we are officially launched. So again, thank you for your support. Also want to give a shout out to the, the district administrative team, who's really worked tirelessly this summer, as well as the building administration, the building and ground staff, technology staff, our administrative assistants, just a lot of work this summer to ensure a smooth start and, you know, a seamless transition into the new school year. So happy new school year to you all. Thanks.
There seemed like a lot of enthusiasm this morning. People were very, especially the Raffles. Very happy, very happy to win. Okay, and next we'll move on to information, no discussion items, the Freedom of Information requests, and the credit card summary reports. Next, we'll move along to school recommendations.
Good evening. Well, we're excited to be back again as we start the school year here, so I have some news that the principals wanted me to share. So we'll start with Addison Trail High School and Principal Jack Andrews. So the information he shared was, today, Addison Trail had an opportunity to welcome back the staff after the morning district office updates and presentation. The slides that the school went through have been shared with the Board, and there was a level of excitement about this year that is carrying over from last school year. We celebrated the successes and identified areas of focus for this school year. On Wednesday, we will meet with the parent group leaders from our booster clubs, CAC and Padres Latinos en Accion. This meeting will be to communicate our goals for the school year and to discuss ways we plan to work together to support our students and programs. On Thursday, Addison Trail is excited to welcome back our students. 9th grade students only will start at 7:45 a.m., and the rest of the student body will join them at 11 a.m. 9th graders will have an opportunity to tour the school and receive a few targeted presentations from staff. They also will be able to visit the activity fair in the morning so they can start to plan which clubs or activities they'd like to join. Addison Trail also will host a safety week starting on August 19, with the annual drills taking place such as evacuation, shelter, and severe weather, and active threat drills occurring throughout the week. Addison Trail also would like to give a friendly reminder to families that fall sports registration is open, and even if a sport has started, it's not too late to sign up. So if there's any questions or if any families need help signing up, please reach out to the athletic department. And lastly, Addison Trail's annual blue and white community night is coming up on August 22. Gates will open at 4:45 p.m., and the event is a great way to celebrate the start of the 25-26 school year, and it'll be showcase of the school's activities, events, athletics. So we invite everyone to come out and join us for that fun event. And to close, Addison Trail would just like to say thank you, and they look forward to a great school year. Moving on to Willowbrook with Principal Dr. Daniel Kraus. He wanted to share that the class of 2026 will continue the school's tradition of the senior sunrise on Wednesday, August 13, beginning at 5 a.m., nice and bright and early in the stadium. There'll be food, music, and the coming together of the senior class, and it will culminate with a group photo as the sun comes up about 5:58 a.m. The first day of school will also be on Thursday, August 14, for Willowbrook as well, and the day will also begin with freshmen only from 7:45 to 11:30 a.m. as they transition to the high school. They'll, they will participate in team-building activities, take tours, meet their Warrior Time teachers and New Beginnings leaders, and learn about the Warrior Code. All students will then begin their day with first period at 11:30 a.m. and will follow an abbreviated schedule. Willowbrook also will be doing a school safety week, and they look forward to the annual safety week starting on August 18, where during each period, they will review the active threat protocols with students and staff. That will be followed by the school's annual severe weather drill on Tuesday, hold-in-place drill on Wednesday, evacuation drill on Thursday, and bus evacuation drill on Friday. Willowbrook will hold their annual Warrior Code meetings starting on Tuesday, August 26, with the seniors, followed by the juniors on August 27, freshmen on August 28, and sophomores on August 29. The focus of each meeting is to share updates on expectations in and out of the classroom, and to share highlights ahead for each of the groups. In athletics, the Warrior Athletics are excited to announce that fall sports... In athletics, the Warrior Athletics are excited to announce that fall sports registration is open. This year, the school is excited to provide the following offerings for students: boys' and girls' cross-country, boys' and girls' golf, boys' soccer, cheerleading, dance, flag football, girls' tennis, girls' swimming, girls' volleyball, and tackle football. Fall sports began today, August 11th, and again, you're still able to sign up, so please check out the link at manage.snap.app/register/willowbrook. So it's on the athletic website if that's easier to go there. And just some important dates coming up that Willowbrook wanted to share. Again, the first day of school is August 14th. The first WPO, which is the Willowbrook Parent Organization meeting, will be at 7 p.m. on August 20th. Also on August 20th will be the first Athletic Booster Club meeting of the year at 7 p.m. And then Willowbrook will host their annual silver and blue community night on August 22nd with similar activities, so there'll be a lot of excitement that evening. So we invite you, the community, to come on out to that event as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, board member reports.
Yeah. I just wanted to shout out to the District 88 band. I got to see them at their summer concert and also walking in the Fourth of July parade, and it was just incredible. That was, and everybody around me was talking about how great it was, and it's really neat. So thank you for, to the board, or to the music directors for putting that together.
Thanks. Anybody else? Okay. Then next we have superintendent's report. Anything further? Okay, then public comments. Do we have any more e-cards?
At this time, we do not have any public comments.
Okay, then we'll move on to announcements. The next Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, August 25th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. in the district boardroom located at district administrative offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. And the following Board of Education meeting will be held on Monday, September 8th, 2025, at 7:30 p.m. in the district boardroom located at district administrative offices, Two Friendship Plaza, Addison, Illinois, 60101. Then at this time, I entertain a motion to move into closed session for the purpose of A, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as independent contractors in a park, recreational, educational setting, or specific volunteers of the public body or to legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, or educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government wage increase, Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with the Act. B, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. And C, security procedures, school building, safety, and security, and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to an actual or threatened or reasonably potential danger to the safety of employees, students, staff, the public, or public property. Presenta I, five, Almec Palas, Satchis, 120 slash two, C8. On roll call, please.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Galvin?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Poyer?
Yes.
Yes. Motion is approved. Don't move into closed session.
Okay, we're reconvened after closed session. Roll call please.
Kayne?
Here.
Bette Davis.
Eric Fueller.
Eric Taylor.
Eric Galvin.
Eric Olson.
Here.
There's no action necessary by the closed session, therefore I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Segment.
All in favor of say. Aye.
Anyone want to post? I just have it. Meeting is adjourned.